Good evening, welcome to the Village of Pleasantville Board of Trustees meeting. Today is Monday, March 8th. If you are watching live Monday, March 8th, we invite you to call in at any time with questions or comments. The number is 769-1677. And as I always mention, you have the option, in addition to watching us on cable vision, you can pick us up live on the web or with on-demand web streaming at PCTV76.org. So again, the number to call in for questions and comments is 769-1677. If you are watching live today, Monday, March 8th. And a couple of things to mention, but firstly, let me mention that our next work session is next Monday, March 15th. A week from tomorrow, Tuesday, March 16th, is the Village Board election. As of the moment, Brian Skarsdott is running unopposed. It's a special election that is the completion of the term I vacated when I became mayor. So when I became mayor, there were two years remaining on my term. I appointed Brian to fill that spot until the next election. The next election is arriving next Tuesday, March 16th, and Brian has stood for election again.
So it's for a one-year term?
There will then...
For the one year and the last year, right, Brian?
Yeah, well, we'll see. Indeed. We'll see.
No, I'm just saying, that's what you said. Like, you know, you stepped up and appreciated.
He's promised not to become the Robert Byrd of Pleasantville politics, although I see no reason to think he's anywhere near that. At any rate, there is a village election Tuesday, March 16th, from noon to 9:00 PM in Village Hall. And am I correct, Judy, that the voting will take place downstairs?
Yeah, in the lobby.
In the lobby, so...
With paper ballots, right?
That is our report. Our next regular meeting is Monday, March 22nd. But two points to note on that front, and that is by March 19th, we'll be posting available for public review the draft budget for the coming fiscal year. Our fiscal year begins July 1, and, I'm sorry, June 1. And by state law, we post a draft budget in the month of March and are required to adopt the final budget by the end of April. So our schedule is that the draft budget will be available for review by March 19th. And our regular meeting on March 22nd will go over the outlines of that draft budget, which is the first effort to identify our revenues and expenses for the coming year. And then we spend the next month or so working with the village staff and the various department heads to find ways to tinker with that budget and make sure that we are comfortable with it. After whatever adjustments we come up with are made, we'll vote on that final budget at some point in the month of April. So there are a number of budget-related landmarks coming up. Again, next Monday, two weeks from today, Monday, March 22nd, we'll have an outline of that budget. And then lastly, our annual organizational meeting by state law will take place on Monday, April 5, 2010, at 7:30 PM. So I had a couple of announcements to make, and the first was, as you all know from your own experience, we had an extremely difficult run of weather that took place over last weekend with a crazy storm that although it perhaps wasn't epic in terms of actual number of inches of snow, was almost unprecedented in terms of the damage it created because we had so much wet snow that then wrapped around the trees and brought down so much of the greenery around the village. So the first thing to be said is that our DPW crew, as they have in the past, stepped up and rose to the occasion, I think, with tremendous energy. And we had people working all night, sent home a crew at 4:00 PM, had them back at midnight. And a number of people commented to me that they were coming back into the village at various points during the storm and could almost identify the village border because of the improved conditions they encountered on Village Street. So Steve Johnson and his entire crew at DPW deserve a tremendous amount of thanks for the effort they made. And it was a moment when I think we can all be proud of, not only the work that our village employees did to clean the village up, but the tremendous amount of support that everybody gave one another. We had an awful lot of people out of power, many of them out of power for three or four days. As those of you who have watched Village Board meetings on a regular basis know, we have not spent a lot of time thanking Con Edison, and there remain a number of categories in which we're extremely unhappy with them. But I have to say, having been in regular touch with them over the course of that weekend, that they were up against a storm of gargantuan proportions. They had, at one point, well over 100,000 people out of power. And on the Sunday of that snowy weekend, we had crews working in the village from Brooklyn, from Atlantic City, and from Toledo, Ohio. So it was quite a logistical effort that Con Ed mounted to put everybody back online. I know everybody who felt like they were late in getting power back felt as though Con Ed could have gotten into them sooner, but I do have to say that it was an impressive effort on their part, and we thank them for that as well. Couple of other points to make. Those of you who are interested, were interested in the Academy Awards last night, followed this saga of cable vision and its fight with ABC. ABC has been demanding extra money in a reprise of the same battle that occurred between cable vision and Food Network and HDTV a few months ago. And on a national level, the same battle that occurred a few months ago between the Fox Network and the Time Warner people. They pulled the signal, ABC pulled the signal yesterday morning, and in the end, it was restored, what, about 8:45 or something? 8:14 would like to have been a fly on the wall, listening to the phone calls that were going back and forth between those two companies. But a couple of points to make. The first is that frustrating though it is, the village has no control over any of that. We are not entitled to weigh in on programming matters or indeed on financial matters in general, as far as our cable companies are concerned. And that's a convenient opportunity to remind you that the Village Board approved about a month ago Verizon contract that would allow Verizon to provide its FiOS cable TV service in the village. It is currently sitting in Albany with the Public Service Commission, awaiting approval there. We understand it's on their agenda for March 25th, and anticipate that it will be approved then. Verizon has indicated that they would be in a position to sell their cable service very shortly thereafter. So assuming that happens on the schedule we anticipate, it would mean that sometime in the month of April, homeowners would have the option of cable vision or Verizon for wired cable TV service, as well as the satellite services that are available if that is of interest. So as I've mentioned in the past, about 75% of the village homes are currently on streets that have been wired for the Verizon service. The balance of the homes are required to be built out in a staged process over a period of maximum five years. So for those of you who are on streets that already have it, or conceivably have already purchased Verizon FiOS Internet, you would be in a position to take advantage of that right away if you so chose. For homeowners that are on streets that have not yet been built out, Verizon will be building those out on a staged basis, and if and when they're up and running, we'll try to keep in touch with them about what streets are next. And it would be behoove a homeowner that wants that service to let Verizon know what their goals are. So lastly, I think it's fair to say that what we saw last night with the battle between cable vision and ABC, and what we have seen in the past, both in the national news and in the local news, about similar battles between content creators and the distribution companies that get these signals into your home, are likely to continue. We're going to have further upheaval in an industry that I think at this point has got people on both sides of the table trying to figure out exactly what sort of a business model makes sense as an internet-oriented world takes root all around the country. So two other things to note, and one of them was that we received, as we do on an annual basis, the information from the county about the village's performance in its recycling. What happens when your trash and recycling is picked up is that our village sanitation crews take the garbage to the county's trash-to-energy plant where it is burned, and they also take the recyclables to the county material recovery plant where it is separated and then sold on the secondary market. So what the county does is keep track of how much gross tonnage each community sends to both of those two facilities, and then gives us an annual report about how we're doing. This year, our numbers came back that we were successful in recycling about 22% of our total waste stream. That is as compared to about 24% last year. So our gross tonnage in both categories, solid waste as well as recyclables, dropped a bit, and that was typical for many communities. We remained in the low 20s in terms of total percentage of recycling, which is a decent result, although not in the top 10 in the county. So I think it's worth noting that all of us need to be paying attention to recycling whenever we can. It would be great to see the numbers for Pleasantville up into the low 30s, which at the moment is the gold standard for communities in Westchester in terms of the percentage of their waste stream that goes to the material recovery plant. So we'll have more to say about that come the coming year. One of our goals for the next year is to focus a little bit on green issues, both as a matter of doing the right thing and also as a matter of trying to save money. So the last point is that in addition to recycling being good in and of itself, we're also subject to fines if our waste stream is found to be contaminated with items that were supposed to be recycled and have not been. So there are any number of good reasons for us to do the right thing. So on the subject of sanitation, you have perhaps seen in the Examiner articles or letters to the editor, you may have seen on telephone polls, a series of posters that have been put up by the union. All of those are in response to the fact that the Village Board let the union know a couple of months ago that we were interested in looking at the possibility of a possible outsourced contract for garbage and recycling pickup at your homes. Nobody's made any decisions. Nobody has even gone to the point of suggesting we're leaning in one way or another. What we simply said was, we've looked at the costs for outsourced sanitation in neighboring communities that have done it for a long time, and those neighboring communities include both Mount Pleasant and Newcastle, I note, and they are paying a good bit less for both of those services than we are. So the question that we reasonably need to ask, indeed, the question we're required to ask by our sworn duties is, hey, guys, why is it that we're paying more for garbage and recycling than our neighbors? Is there some way where we can narrow the delta between those two numbers? Or with some appropriate research into why those costs are the way they are, are we confident that we're getting appropriate dollars, spending appropriate dollars for the benefits we receive? So the response to that from the union has been a public relations campaign. It's a free country. Obviously, they're entitled to do what they will, but we are meeting with them again Wednesday. And my message to them will be similar to the message that I've delivered before, which is that the sooner we stop talking about side issues and start talking about the question of what it costs and why, the better chance we will have of getting to the finish line in a manner that satisfies everybody. So that's my report on the sanitation front, and I think I've been long-winded enough. Did anybody else have anything to note?
Other than that, you were long-winded? No. Only kidding.
I allow Mindy to make these comments.
You even gave me a gavel.
Because of the spirit of the free exchange of opinions that characterizes this board.
Horizons, did you say? It's a little gavel.
It's a mini-me gavel.
A mini-me gavel. We, those of you who have been watching on a regular basis, will be aware that we've been inviting various people in to update us on what's going on, and that includes department heads within the village, but also the people who lead various organizations around the village. About six months ago, Steve Apcon came and gave us a report on the goings-on at the Jacob Burns Film Center and the new Media Arts Lab, and we encouraged him to come back in six months or so to let us know what was going on now, and he has graciously done so, so I invite you to the podium.
He's the only one that accepted the re-offer. You're so kind, Steve.
Thank you for coming.
Thanks for having me. I appreciate it. So I brought a few calendars for the Film Center and also the program for the Media Arts Lab for you guys. But I thought I could just give you a very quick overview of some of the things that have been happening at the Film Center and some of the things that will be happening over the next month, just to give you a sense of what we're up to. Hopefully, you had a chance to watch the Oscars last night. It was nice to see that many, many of the films that were up for awards not only were playing here at the Film Center, but that we had opportunities to meet with the filmmakers in a variety of venues. Avatar, we did a 3D screening of Avatar with Stephen Lang, who's the villain in that film, plays a wonderful role. Hurt Locker, Crazy Heart with Jeff Bridges and Maggie Gyllenhaal here. Lovely Bones with Stanley Tucci, Up in the Air with Jason Reitman. So watching the Oscars last night, we were all well-prepared for here in Pleasantville at the Film Center. And many of those screenings were open to all members. Upcoming events, very international. We begin a three-week retrospective of the great Japanese filmmaker Kurosawa. That begins on March 18th and goes through April 6th. On this Friday night, March 12th, we'll be doing a sneak preview of a film. It is open to the public. It's at 10 o'clock at night, and it's a new film called The Runaways, which is about Joan Jett. And Kristen Stewart, who many of you know, and certainly your kids know from Twilight, stars as Joan Jett. And this is a film that was at Sundance, and the studio's been great enough to give us a preview screening, and we have opened that up to the public.
What night is that?
Friday night.
This Friday night?
Yeah. There's also a Friday night series going on that most people probably haven't heard about, and you guys may not have heard about, because it's an underground series, and it's a series just for teens, takes place over at the Media Arts Lab. And it is entirely programmed by them. It has ranged enormously in terms of the films they show. They vote on what they're showing. We've had filmmakers come to meet with them, and they only know about it from Facebook. So it's one of the things that we're doing to try to create a community center that's an alternative to the recreational programs that the village offers, or that the school offers, or the things that you can see at the Film Center. And it's just for them, and run by a great guy on our staff, and it's been a really terrific On April 8th, we will have the great New York Times journalist, I think she's about 96 years young, Ruth Gruber, who has lived through an enormous amount of history, world history, has been there to witness extraordinary events, and she will be here for a movie about her life called Ahead of Time, and she'll be interviewed by Ann Curry. So that's April 8th. And we also began doing something about four or five months ago that has had great success, and that is showing live theater from the National Theater in London. And the next screening is April 22nd, so something else to check out. That's a little bit of what's going on at the Film Center. So a very wide spectrum, and we continue to run family movies every Saturday and Sunday. Our first screenings are movies for families, and things continue to percolate there. So check out the calendar, e-Bulletin, and a variety of other ways of seeing what's going on. I want to talk to you a little bit also about the Media Arts Lab, and there's a real point of connection between what's going on at the Media Arts Lab and what's going on at the Film Center. And that's bridged best by a program that I think I told you a little about when I was here last, which is the International, Project for International Understanding Through Film, which brings filmmakers from around the world here. Our first filmmaker was from Burkina Faso, and then we welcomed a Bosnian filmmaker. This fall, we had a wonderful documentary filmmaker from Israel, Idoh Har. And several weeks ago, we welcomed really an extraordinary man here, and he's here for a month. His name is Bahman Farmanara, and he is really one of the fathers of Iranian cinema. And Iranian cinema is considered one of the great cinemas of the world, along with French cinema. And he really has been there from the resurgence of Iranian cinema in the 70s. He was in exile, self-imposed after the revolution, and went back about 19 years ago, and has dealt with censorship there and trying to get his films made. It was an extraordinary success to be able to get him out of the country and into this country. And he has been here, and there'll be something on PCTV, actually, I believe, Peter, that you filmed this afternoon with Bahman.
Right.
He has brought many of his films. We've had extraordinary screenings with the public and with this community, both students and public audience at the Film Center. That continues this Thursday night with his newest film called Earthbound. One of the things that's interesting about Earthbound is when it was made in Iran, it actually was censored. Many scenes were taken out by the government, and he was able to get a director's cut out at one point, and that's what we'll be screening. So you'll see it in its entirety and what his vision is. And he is very, very open. I think it's one of these situations where the world of film and the greater world really come together in an extraordinary way. He's very open, talking about Iran and what's going on there, very worldly about geopolitics, and just a great resource for our community, for our schools, for our children, for our adults. And he'll be here through March 18th, so I highly recommend trying to catch any of his films. He also programmed a series of documentaries about Iran, and they're really quite eye-opening. He brought a couple, two films in particular about women in Iran. One of them is called We Are Half the Population, and it's about the women's movement in Iran. And it is so far, so different than what we see in our mainstream media, and to see the emerging role of a woman in politics in Iran, and everything that's going on there with recent elections, et cetera. It's quite, quite powerful. So we're thrilled to have Bahman here, and we are eagerly awaiting our next fellows. Our programs continue both for children and for adults. We say we have programs from four years old to 104. That is no joke. The woman who has supported and funded our international filmmakers program, Mrs. Catherine Davis, just celebrated her 103rd birthday. So next year, we may be going up to 105 in her honor. But we do run programs from four years old to 104, and we have people from all over the community taking place, a number of them taking place free of charge, as nobody's turned away based on financial circumstances. Those programs continue through the summer. We are now in enrollment for the summer, so anybody who's interested in that. And I really urge so many people to come and take advantage of the adult classes. We have people who have never picked up a camera and never thought about filmmaking, really engaged in terrific projects. We have, somebody in town is working on a project about Vietnam War reenactors, and a variety of other things that are going on, so quite imaginative and fun. And you don't have to have any background in filmmaking to take one of these classes. The last thing I would leave you with is a thanks, a thanks to you guys for everything that you do, but also to the community. All of our educational programs rely on volunteers. We have volunteers in our offices every day who are helping make this nonprofit film and education center able to do what we do. We have volunteers that work with our students, our third-grade students, our fourth-grade students. We've now made over 500 animated films with nine- and 10-year-olds, both in the school systems, but also in Boys and Girls Clubs and homeless shelters. We are again working in the prison this semester. And all of that happens in large part through volunteers. So we're always looking for people who are willing to jump in, and we're happy to train people, and all you have to do is come with an open heart and a sense of adventure and a willingness to give to great children. So that's a little bit of what's going on. Be happy to answer any questions you guys might have.
Steve, first off, everything you've said about Bahman Farmanara is not only true, but understates not only what a delightful man he is, but how interesting it is to talk to somebody, as he himself points out, who is able to communicate something of the life of the people of Iran. A lot of what we know of Iran in the newspaper is the journalistic reports of the political battles that exist between our countries, but he is such an engaging, interesting person, and as you pointed out, able to create, provide such an interesting perspective on what it's like to live as a creative, free-thinking person in that society, that that's a gift to the community, and thank you guys for doing that, and thanks to Catherine Davis for making it possible. Do you yet know what that program looks like in the future? Is there sort of a schedule of four or six of these people per year? Do you yet know?
We've had now, over the past year since we started the program, we've had four different filmmakers here for varying lengths, and that will continue, and it'll be supplemented not only by filmmakers, but also by educators from around the world that can come and work with us at the Media Arts Lab, but also work with our schools. So it'll be a variety of people, and it will continue in this kind of vein as we go forward.
And for the benefit of those people who don't know, these people come and actually live in the house on Grand Street adjacent to the Media Arts Lab?
Yes, they do, and they have come to a variety of community events and are available to come to synagogues and churches and houses of worship and to rotary clubs and to, they really come as ambassadors, both to screen their films, but also, in Bahman's case, to talk to anybody who wants to talk. He has fallen in love with Amman Jari and with a number of other restaurants in the area.
Spoke highly of the diner today on his PCTV gig.
Yes, that's good. And he just, you know, he, this is a man who is celebrated by international film festivals. He's won major awards at all of these film festivals around the world. He's had a very, very important career and has many opportunities to travel and to do these kinds of things when he can get out. And he chose to come to Pleasantville, and he has not been on the train going into the city. He's really stayed here, and he walks the streets, and he wants to be part of this kind of community. And the more that we engage with him, the richer we are for it.
Does he go in any of the schools? Does he go in the high schools?
We are arranging for him to go to the high school. We've made him accessible to all of the schools.
That's sure good.
So yes.
That would be great.
And also some of the universities around. He, I would urge you to learn a little bit about him if you don't have a chance to come to a screening, if you Google Bahman, B-A-H-M-A-N, Farmanara, or better yet, turn on PCTV and look for this show. But one of the things you'll see if you Google him is there is an open letter that he wrote after the young woman, Neda, was murdered after the presidential vote in Iran. He, at great risk, wrote an open letter in the press denouncing that and talking about his views of it. It made it questionable whether he would be able to come here. And while he was here this week, earlier in the week, two of his colleagues, two Iranian filmmakers, were arrested. So he is here with great bravery and courage and conviction, and we're very, very fortunate to have him here in Pleasantville.
On another front, Steve, I ran into the director of the Mount Pleasant Library today, John Furon. And in case people don't know, the Jacob Burns Film Center curates a collection of DVDs at the Mount Pleasant Public Library. And John told me that, told me this, he sent me an email, also some excellent news. February was the first full month of lending the Burns DVDs for a seven-day period, and circulation surged. A total of 612 titles were borrowed for a total in the first two and a half months of 1,344.
Wow.
So it's huge. It's turned out to be a huge thing for Mount Pleasant Public Library.
That's fantastic. I'm so glad you shared those numbers, Brian. I had no idea of those numbers.
And he's very pleased.
We think that there are no greater people than John and the people at the Mount Pleasant Public Library. We're thrilled to be in partnership with them, and it's a wonderful, very simple idea. There is a separate section of the DVD collection that is curated by our programming department. It started with 250 DVDs, which means that many of them have been out multiple times, and is being added to every month. It is some of the best films that we play over time, and it's some titles that you would know and some titles that you wouldn't know. It's very mixed between documentary and narrative, international and US films, and we're adding to it all the time. It also has a highlight of many local filmmakers. So you'll definitely find some of Jonathan Demme's films, and Terry George, Hotel Rwanda, among others, Stanley Tucci, Ron Howard, and a variety of other people that are involved at the Burns that are represented in this collection as well.
Well, one of the amazing things about that collection is, and we live across the street, for those who don't know, across the street from libraries, so we can actually go to the library, four minutes left of open time, and just run to that shelf and pick any DVD, any at all, that we haven't seen, and it turns out to be a classic. It turns out to be something we're really glad we saw. There's no other DVD area where you can say that.
Yeah, but by the numbers that you read to us, Brian, I must be wrong, but I always thought it was one of the best-kept secrets, that really you can find an incredible library of DVDs right in our town, within walking distance of most of us, and it's as good as, you know, Netflix or any video place that you could find, and it's all available to us, you know, for free as part of being in this community.
I don't know if any of Bahman Farmanara's films are available. I don't know if any of Baumann Farmanara's films are available on DVD, but...
They certainly, there are films that are available on DVD, and they certainly will be part of the collection.
Because it would be, I was struck today in this interview I did with him at PCTV that he has one film they did in 1974, Tall...
Shadows in the Wind.
Shadows in the Wind, yeah. That he amusingly tells the story that when it was released in 1974, the Shah was then in power, and it was very shortly thereafter banned because it was believed to be directly critical of the Shah. And so, it went back into the closet, and the revolution occurred in 1979. It was released again and very quickly banned by the new revolutionary government because they were convinced that it was aimed at them, so he...
Even though it had been made five years prior.
He had the distinction of having been accused of creating a film that was directly aimed at two different governments, even without knowing that they would happen, so...
Well, that's very true, and in fact, it had, I believe, it had three days of access to the public in Iran, so it played for three days before it was banned again by the new regime, which means that here in Pleasantville, it has now exceeded its run in Tehran, so...
As I said in this program today, Pleasantville, once again, has an influence disproportionate to its size.
Think globally, act locally.
Exactly, right. It's worth noting, I think, not to leave the wrong impression, that hearing Baumann's comments are, I encourage everybody to find them on PCTV if they can, because this is a person who, despite the difficulties associated with making movies in this environment, and really the sort of changing conditions that he has confronted, all of which have had their own sets of problems, he remains committed to it. It's his country, his culture. There's no other place he wants to be making movies, and there remains, even amid an environment where he can't do some of the things he wishes he could, the really very optimistic sense, I think, that he is achieving something both for his own art and in prying open the eyes and the minds of some people within Iran who might otherwise not see it. He said, "One of the satisfactions of it all is that he makes the assumption that most of the people that would take the job as government censors are probably a bit senile to begin with, and therefore, they miss some of his intent and allow it to slip through."
Well, I think actually that one of the reasons why Iranian cinema is so strong is the need to tell stories metaphorically.
Yeah.
Because the literal stuff does end up getting caught by censors, and in fact, he went for 10 years where they tried to wear him down. They rejected every film that he wanted to make for 10 years, and he wouldn't give up and ultimately...
Well, and although I'm very much new to that whole genre, it would appear that the need to speak metaphorically because of the political conditions also connects to a sort of set of cultural metaphors that were imprinted to begin with, and it certainly creates a set of circumstances that make it a very interesting subject to be talking about here in Pleasantville, New York, and makes us unique, thanks to your good efforts, as I suppose perhaps the only community in the United States that has had the sort of sequence of visitors that have attended your program. I want to touch on something that we talked about briefly when you were here the last time, and that is the fact that you now have these two facilities, both the theater, which is now, what, about to be nine?
Yes, and it'll be nine in June.
And the Media Arts Lab, which is now in its second year.
Yes, that's right.
And it would be worth commenting on the sort of level of employment you have there. I see a great flood of people getting off the train, commuting to Pleasantville to work in your two facilities, and also quite a few of those people, regular visitors in the delis and the stores nearby, so I think it'd be interesting to touch on the sort of economic impact that you're all doing.
Sure, sure. I can't give you the exact number because I wasn't prepared to, and it changes every day.
Why not?
But I can tell you that we have, I believe at last count, it was roughly 60, 65 employees, not including theater staff that are hourly.
Which is what, roughly 10 times the business plan that you imagine 10 years ago.
Right, and well, it's grown in ways that we didn't anticipate, but in very positive ways, I think. We do have a number of people who commute here by the train from the city, so it's nice to see that we are still somewhat of a commuting town, but a reverse commute in a sense.
Should I send a condolence note to Mayor Bloomberg?
Yeah. I don't think that alone would solve his problems.
We're a net importer of New York City.
Right, I think that's true. We probably are. And it's a wonderful group of people that have all made a real significant sacrifice that believe in our nonprofit mission and that have made some sort of financial sacrifice to be working in a nonprofit, but are a very important part of what we do and a very important part of this community. We feel very much a part of the community, all of our staff does. And I said, you know, 60, 65, not including the theater staff, and I don't want to in any way diminish those numbers, because we have so many kids that spent, now nine years old, that spent their teenage years and college years working at the Film Center, and they've created a real community, and it's really wonderful and personally very satisfying to see how many kids have grown up, coming here and using the Film Center and then becoming a part of it through work and volunteering and learning what it is to work in this kind of environment.
Well, Steve, I appreciate your visit. I would encourage you to come back in six months. I just, I think as not only are great and interesting things going on over at the two facilities you run, but as is inevitably the case, an activity that has grown to the scale that yours has comes with some frictions and difficulties that we all need to be focused on and working on as well, and I know you are available to do that, as are we, and the more we discuss all that's going on, both the great things, as well as the things where there are opportunities to work together better, we all end up stronger from it, so...
Absolutely, and we know that we don't always get everything that we try right, and we are, we want to be very open to dialogue and suggestion and welcome any comments from you guys and from anybody in the community, and we very much see this as a partnership. You know, we're there every day, as are you guys, thinking about how to make this village better, and we want to contribute in any way we can, and we appreciate the partnership, so thanks.
All right, same time, same channel. Six months.
I'm going to leave some summer programs, Summer at the Lab, and calendars for March and April.
You have a continuing program this summer with Films Outdoors.
I don't know where that stands. There's been some discussion about that. I don't know where that is. We haven't done it the last couple summers, and I know there was some discussion and some interest in possibly doing something in the summer, so I'm not sure where that stands, Steve, but...
I want to do something at the pool.
At the pool?
Yeah. But we have a lighting issue. We don't have the, so float, float night, float in the pool and watch a movie, kind of fun.
We're open to any ideas.
Yeah.
Get programming, talking about what might be appropriate for that kind of...
You could show the swimmer, and we could go from pool to pool.
Well, yeah.
Show the Titanic.
Jaws.
Jaws. Let's keep going.
Yeah. No, I just, you have to light the pool.
There's a reason we don't work in your program.
You have to see the bottom of the pool. It has to be dark to see the movie, but then it has to be light to see the water, so for safety reasons.
You might lose viewership during the film.
Permanently.
Right.
Well, no, it's a, you know, state law that you have to...
And a reasonable state law.
See the bottom of the pool.
A reasonable state law.
Yeah.
Okay, here you go.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate it, Steve, thanks. So, again, anybody who's watching, if you have comments or questions about anything that's going on or that you wish might be going on, 769-1677 is the number to call I wanted to mention a couple of things that we have been talking about in work session, both before and after the meeting, and one of them is that we have a number of new people who have volunteered for the Farm Market Committee, and among them is Peter Rogavin, who lives up on Wilton and has been a regular customer at the Farm Market and has also assisted the village in a bunch of other ways, including some assistance with some surveys and brand marketing stuff, which is what he does for a living, but he and both the past members and the new members of the Farm Market Committee are thinking about how the market might look in the new year and are looking at ways where the configuration might be changed to see whether there's some opportunities there, so we thank them very much for their effort and encourage you to keep an eye out. Farm Market opens end of May, right?
No, it opens in June.
First weekend in June.
First weekend, yeah.
There being no further discussion, we can go to the resolutions. Steve, number 45.
Resolved that pre-check register dated March 8, 2010, covering check numbers 65793 to 65926, has been reviewed and are hereby approved as listed below. General fund, $135,999.30. Water fund, $20,152.60. Capital fund, $9,896. Refuge fund, $4,316.05. Pool fund, $1,397.50. Trust and agency fund, $1,965, for a total of $174,726.45.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees has reviewed the minutes of the meeting held on Monday, February 8th and February 22nd, 2010, and they are hereby approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or corrections? Judy, thank you for your service here. We talked a long time at this meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. Brian?
Forty-seven. Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby accepts the following donations: $500 anonymous, $125 anonymous, and $30 also anonymous. I gave those.
I think we made donations to the village? The village, not like the senior citizen program?
For senior citizen projects.
This is the senior program, something like that.
Right.
Oh, okay. Does it say that?
At the heading.
Oh, at the top, I'm sorry.
Is there a second? Did we have a second?
Second, yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. Thank you very much to three different anonymous donors.
Could have been the same one.
Our senior programs continue to attract the interest and support of so many people who have benefited from them, and we appreciate that very much. Steve, number 48.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby authorizes the village administrator to sign an agreement for recreation services with the Dads Club.
Is there a second? Second. This, the history of this is that for quite a period of time, the Dads Club has essentially functioned as a, it's an independent organization that provides recreation programs for the village, but for a whole series of reasons, it was, it made sense for them to incorporate as a certified 501(c)(3) not-for-profit corporation and establish themselves very clearly as a legally separate entity, for a whole series of reasons, including auditing and all of the above, and so, as a result of that, we are now ratifying a more detailed description that essentially describes what has always gone on, which is that the Dads Club, through the good services of their many volunteer administrators and coaches, will provide boys' football, girls' field hockey, girls' volleyball, girls' cheerleading, and boys' baseball in the fall; in the winter, boys' lacrosse, boys' wrestling, and boys' and girls' basketball; in the spring, boys' baseball, girls' softball, and boys' and girls' lacrosse; and in the summer, baseball. So, thanks go to Lori Shea and the entire crew over at the Dads Club working through this and also going through the process that I'm sure involved quite a bit of effort on their part in order to establish all the paperwork that goes into becoming an incorporated Have I fairly described all of that, Patty?
You have. Just to speak to the issue of payment to the Dads Club for services rendered, we agreed in principle that that payment would be the equivalent of the insurance premium that they would have to pay, as they are now an independent 501(c)(3) running our program, so we had received quotes, I believe that number is somewhere between $6,000 and $6,500.
How much is it, I'm sorry?
About $6,000 to $6,500, but I'll have that number for you.
Right, and one of the issues is that in the past, the Dads Club's coverage under the village's policy was believed to be enforced, but not absolutely crystal clear because of the nebulous relationship that existed, and as a result, although we incur some modest additional cost, it covers everybody, I think, more carefully, so...
Mm-hmm.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. Number 49.
Is that Steve or me?
That's you.
Me? Oh, how appropriate. Resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby appoints the following members. Am I on the right one?
You're on the right one.
You are.
To the Farmers Market Committee, Peter Rogavin, Sarah Rogavin, Andy Goodman, and Amanda... Dundas. Dundas? Dundas.
Is there a second?
Second.
Per my comments of a moment ago, this crew of people have joined some of the people already on the Farm Market Committee, and they're up and running already, even as we only now actually resolved to appoint them, so...
Yes, and they are, and we already received an email from Peter, and we met with him at 7 o'clock, and he already sent us an email, just so you know. He just left here momentarily, but we thank you so much for taking on this very honorable cause.
And that thanks comes from Mindy, who is the person who has been involved in shepherding the market in its infancy all the way up till now, which is now what?
Since inception.
More than 10 years, is it?
No, it's 15 years, I think, since we started, right? 1990?
Was it 1996, '07?
'06, I think it was.
Mindy started when she was 17.
Yes, of course.
But, and even more to the point is that here are four people, some of whom have had something to do sort of in volunteer ways, but this is their first membership, I think, on a board for these guys, and this is a great thing.
This is great.
I mean, we all can't serve forever. I mean, you would think that I've been on this board forever, and we're all going to have to leave, and this is how new people, people who have come later than we came into the village, how they start to be a part of the governing of Pleasantville. So, I would encourage everybody to, if you're watching this, think of ways you can volunteer in the Village of Pleasantville and take part in...
And then you could be like Brian one day.
Yeah, you can just serve for nauseatingly long periods of time. It will come to an end.
[laughing]
I still like it, though.
I know, you do a great job.
Well, and we still like you.
You're good at it, that's right.
Yes, me too.
I plead guilty, I appointed you, so...
Right.
Did we vote on that, Judy?
All in favor?
Well, then we better. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. Thank you to Peter and Sarah Rogavin, Andy Goodman, and Amanda Dundas. Number 50.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the request from the Pleasantville Garden Club to use the gazebo at Memorial Plaza to hold their annual garden sale on Saturday, May 8, 2010, from 6:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., and further authorizes the Public Works Department to block off 10 parking spaces on either side of the gazebo.
Is there a second?
Second.
Be early.
Yes, otherwise it's all sold out.
Right, you got to be there before 9 o'clock, although they're selling stuff after that, but it's one of the biggest sales in the village.
It's a great annual event. Thank you to the Garden Club for doing it. We're happy to give you the gazebo on the plaza. Saturday, March 8 kicks off the spring activities. The following weekend, Saturday, I'm sorry, May 8, I apologize, is the Garden Club. The following Saturday, May 15, is Pleasantville Day, and then three weekends, hence June 5, is the opening of the Farm Market, so Memorial Plaza starts to have an alternate life on weekends, starting with the Garden Club on May 8. All in favor?
Aye.
Number 51, Steve.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby approves the following budget amendments to increase revenue and expense for the sidewalk project: $6,045.13 coming from a revenue budget code being transferred to an expense budget code and to fund purchase of the DBW superintendent's vehicle, buying out the lease for a total of $12,580. Two amounts of $5,032 coming from two separate contingency funds, and another of $2,515 coming from another contingency fund, all three being transferred to admin equip auto budget codes for the purchase of the buyout lease on the superintendent's vehicle.
Is there a second?
Second.
Patty, you want to describe this, and it's companion number 52.
I'm sorry, yes, the first part of that is to recognize revenue that we receive from sidewalk repairs that were done on a 50/50 program. So, when we do those projects throughout the village, we... So when we do those projects throughout the village, we incur 50% of the cost, and the property owner incurs 50%. And when we collect their money, we put it back into the sidewalk budget. The second part is acquiring the vehicle that had been on lease for three years for the superintendent of public works that expires, I believe, the end of March. The program that we had been involved in with leasing vehicles for the past probably 10 years or so had been terminated, so there aren't any more opportunities for us to lease vehicles. We have to purchase vehicles. But the condition of the vehicle that Steve's been driving that has been under lease for three years is excellent, and it would make sense to purchase that off lease for the residual value instead of going out to the market for a different car at this point in time.
Thank you. We looked at the option of a hybrid. There's a new Ford Escape hybrid available on the state contract, but would have been well more than twice the cost of buying this vehicle off the lease. It's a vehicle we know about, and we do have the policy going forward of buying hybrids wherever we can, but this clearly is a logical thing to do in this circumstance, so... All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Mindy, number 52, the companion to that previous one.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby approves the purchase of a previously leased 2007 Chrysler Jeep in the amount of $12,580 for the use by the superintendent of public works.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. There was one other Cablevision notice that I received that I meant to mention earlier and forgot to, and that is that I received a letter from Cablevision indicating that effective April 5, they will no longer sell the analog family cable package to new customers. Existing customers will experience no change, but effective April 5, they will not accept any new customers to the analog family cable package. That was the package that you were able to buy to get the basic package and not have to have a cable box, which costs an additional amount of money every month. So after April 5, in order to buy a new subscription to family cable, you'll be required to buy, to rent a digital equipment box, as well as one of the IO packages, as they call it in their marketing speak, so...
This is good news.
I wouldn't characterize it as, I would characterize it as the way of the world. Those of you who are interested in the offerings of Verizon when Verizon FiOS is available, which, as I mentioned, is expected to be in April, I think are likely to find a similar circumstance. The reality is that all of these cable TV services are morphing towards an all-digital environment, and they're also morphing towards an environment where unless you have a specific kind of tuner in your television, you'll be required to have a separate cable box that has a digitally read card that plugs into it, that in essence codes your box to receive the services.
Soon we're going to have, like, all these cable boxes. I could just see this, like, you know, comic in The New Yorker with the different digital cable boxes for this kind of programming, HD this, and...
So good news is we have a really good library in this village.
Yeah, that's right.
Stay tuned. The future of cable television is likely, at least as far as I can see, to be a little bit rocky for the coming years, as these various services try to figure out how to compete in a brave new world, so... Any other firm comments, questions, comments from the audience?
Mayor, I have one thing to add, if you don't mind. Just a public service announcement from our building department on behalf of Michael Testa. Last month, a new law went into effect in the state of New York called Amanda's Law. It requires all residences in the state of New York to install carbon monoxide detectors. And Mike can give people more information, but it is mandatory in every home. We have a notice on our website about it, but please call Mike Testa at 769-1926 if you have questions regarding the applicability of the law, or how to go about installing the detectors, and where they need to be installed.
Or go to the village website, which is pleasantville-ny.gov.
Yes.
Is the information that we have on the site, I noticed that listing...
It's somewhat descriptive, but it's not all inclusive.
Is it complete enough that the people could understand what's required of it?
Yes.
So...
It sounds like a great thing. How is that enforced?
Single-family homes, it cannot be enforced by inspection unless there's a warrant or a reason to. But certainly if there's an incident, you know, landlords would be, you know, it would behoove them to make sure that they have these installed, and that the people take it upon themselves as for their own safety, you know, to have those measures in place.
Carbon monoxide, please.
And you can get these at Burger's?
You can get them in any hardware store.
I had one in my house. I've had one in my house for years.
They come in different forms. You can plug them into outlets, you can have them hardwired, you can have battery-operated, similar to a smoke detector. Some are combination units.
And it doesn't matter what kind you get, just as long as you have...
The location where you place them is set in the law. They have to be in a certain proximity to the bedrooms in your home, so Mike can give you more detail on that.
Let's remind you, it's right in the hallway.
Okay. Thank you for pointing that out, Patty. And just one more opportunity to say thank you for the guys who worked so hard last weekend on DPW to clean up the village, and continue to work hard to clean up the debris. And thanks to all of you, friends and neighbors around Pleasantville, who not only got out and assisted in every way you could, but in so many occasions helped your friends and neighbors who were in need at one point or another during the weekend, so it was a...
It felt like a small town, didn't it?
It sure did.